Indivisible with liberty and justice for all.
And Commissioner Egenberger, could you please call the roll?
Sure.
Cruz.
Here.
Egenberger, here. Foster, she is not here, she emailed us all. Janowski.
Here.
Lee.
Here.
Singh, also emailed that he was not going to make it. Watkins.
Yeah.
Weber.
Here.
And Chairperson Zuber.
Here. And for the record, let's just make a note that we have Patrick Sloan and Aaron Schluto from the township, and we have Courtney Agusa, our consultant here this evening. So, thanks for joining us. All right, very good. We have got two sets of minutes to approve. Does anyone have anything to discuss about the June 17th minutes?
Motion to approve, Madam Chair.
Okay.
Support.
I have a motion to approve by Commissioner Watkins and support by Commissioner Weber. Any further discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Okay, we also have minutes from July 1st. Anything?
Motion to approve.
Second.
All right, we have a motion to approve by Commissioner Weber and support by Commissioner Watkins this time. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Okay, anything to add to our agenda, Patrick? Or delete?
No additions or deletions.
Okay, okay. I thought I'd push for deletions, but, just kidding. Looks like we have a lot of stuff on our agenda this evening. Very good. Anything that you have heard from any, anyone that we need to know about? Any communications?
No communications that we've received related to any agenda items or anything else.
Okay, excellent. Very good. We have a public comment session next. If anybody here would like to speak about anything that's not already on the agenda, now's your chance. Great. I don't see anyone who's jumping up, so I'm gonna, I recognize some faces that will be talking to on the agenda, but...
And Madam Chair, did we have an acceptance of the agenda?
Oh, thank you, thank you. Okay, I skipped something. Could anyone like to make a motion to accept the agenda?
So moved.
All right.
Second.
All right, we have a motion by Commissioner Lee and support by Commissioner Weber. Any further discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Awesome, thank you. Thank you for catching that. All right, so we have no public comment, and so we're gonna move right into a public hearing. We have item number one is Public Hearing 068-RZ for rezoning, -8318. This is the Cherry Hill and Beck rezoning. We're considering rezoning for parcel number 068-99-0007-0001, also known as 48030 Cherry Hill Road, from RR Rural Residential to R2 Single Family Residential. The property is located on the north side of Cherry Hill and west of North Beck Road. The proposed rezoning is for a future, can't talk tonight, a future residential development application. Patrick, please tell us more.
Thank you. Before you this evening is a proposed rezoning on the north side of Cherry Hill Road, and the location is west of Beck. And up on the screen here, we have an aerial photo of the site. Currently has a single-family residence, and the rest of it is farmed. On the far north side of the site is the ITC corridor, some of which passes through the north end of the parcel. And then on the north side of the site, south of ITC, there's a drain that runs through the property as well. The applicant is proposing to rezone the subject parcel from rural residential, which is a five-acre minimum lot size, to R2 Single Family Residential, which is a density of approximately two units per acre. Going up one page, this is an illustration of the zoning map, and it shows where the site that's hatched on the screen here is in the RR district. These bold lines are the zoning districts. And just east of the RR district is the R2 district. So it's adjacent to the R2 district on the south and east side, and a little bit farther up on the north side, there's the R2 district. And the future land use map of the township and the comprehensive plan is shown on the screen here, and it's in this light orange area, which is classified as a low-density residential at a density of approximately two units per acre, or density up to two units per acre. So the proposed zoning to the R2 district is consistent with the future land use classification and the comprehensive plan. The purpose of the rezoning is, the applicant intends to assemble the subject parcel with property to the east, and eventually propose a detached condominium residential project. And the plan that's on the screen here, it's for illustrative purposes only. It's not part of the rezoning application in the sense that if there's approval of the rezoning, it's not necessarily approval of this layout. Or if the zoning is not approved, the fact that there's this layout submitted would not be by itself grounds for a disapproval. What it is, is it's an illustration of how the site could potentially be developed under the proposed R2 zoning. Staff has not reviewed this in great detail to determine if this is a compliant plan. That would require a very thorough review of zoning ordinance and additional plan sheets showing a lot of different details. So the fact that the illustrative plan is here on the screen, that's no indication that this plan that you're seeing would comply with all the standards of the R2 district. This is just an illustration of what the applicant intends to do. And I mention that because the intent of the layout here is to comply with all standards of the zoning ordinance for detached condominiums. And it doesn't necessarily mean that that's an application that the owner or applicant will come forward with if the rezoning is successful, but it's what they're, what they have in mind at this point in time. So the subject parcel is about 11 acres, and it would be assembled with property to the east, which is proposed. The eventual size of the subject parcel and the adjacent parcels that it's proposed on this plan would be just under 35 acres. And what you see on the screen here is a concept for 68 detached units. And again, just because there's 68 shown on the plan is no indication that if the rezoning is successful, that that is in fact what would eventually be approved. If the rezoning is recommended by the Planning Commission, the next step would be for the application to go to the Township Board of Trustees for final action. If the rezoning is ultimately approved, then the applicant would return to the Planning Commission with an application for Site Planner Review, which may be preliminary Site Planner Review, or at the option of the applicant, they could submit a Plan Development District application. So there's some unknowns in terms of what the eventual application will start out as if the rezoning is approved.
Patrick, can I interrupt you for one second? Can you just outline with your mouse the parcel that we're rezoning on this, approximately where that is on this plan?
Sure, I'll go to the aerial map here.
Yeah, just tie those two together for us, please.
Yeah, so here is the parcel. And then if we go to the...
Just rezoning one piece of this whole thing? So that's approximately where this is. Okay, thank you.
Yeah, on the west end.
Thank you.
So for a rezoning to be considered, there are 10 standards of review that are in Section 27.06D4 of the zoning ordinance, and it has 10 standards that have to be considered in evaluating whether a rezoning would be approved. The first is whether the amendments in accordance with the basic intent and purpose of the zoning ordinance. We find that it is, even though the concept plan is just that, a concept plan. There are many elements of the proposed rezoning and how the site could be developed that would comply with the intent and purpose of the zoning ordinance. The proposed amendment is consistent with the comprehensive plan of the future land use map of the comprehensive plan, which is proposed density of two units per acre. There wouldn't be anything that would be granting special privileges to the property as a result of approving a rezoning based on the application itself. It's not a request for special privileges or something outside of what the master plan recommends or that the zoning ordinance reasonably allows. It also would not create an inappropriate precedent, and also the proposed rezoning is consistent with the existing land uses of nearby property. One of the items that we evaluate in a rezoning is whether all proposed zoning standards can be met based on the proposed R2 district. We find that it is possible, even if the parcel remains as one parcel, that one parcel can comply with the zoning ordinance. If there's any dividing of the property or any assembly with adjacent properties, it is feasible to comply with the R2 district. It might not necessarily mean that the layout that's on the screen will necessarily be approved, but compliance with the R2 district standards is possible. And then finally, I skipped over some of the standards, but they're in our staff report there that we can go back to. The 10th standard is, if a rezoning is requested, what is the impact on township infrastructure? For the water and sewer, the subject property is proposed to be serviced by Community Water and Sewer Service, which is available in the area. There is water main and sewer main line located along Cherry Hill Road and Beck Road. The comprehensive plan recommends a density of two units per acre, and the plan recognizes a synchronous relationship between the township's sanitary sewer master plan and the comprehensive plan. Therefore, there's expected capacity in the systems. For the roads, Cherry Hill Road and Beck Road are both paved and are both under the jurisdiction of Wayne County. There are access points proposed onto both roads according to the layout. The traffic impact study has been submitted by the applicant and prepared by Flees and Vanderbrink. The traffic impact study concludes that the proposed development is expected to have a minimal impact on the adjacent roadway network, and that the existing infrastructure can adequately accommodate the proposed trips generated by the proposed development plan. Therefore, the traffic impact study does not recommend any mitigation measures. The traffic impact study was reviewed by Wade Trim, which is Canton Township's traffic engineering consultant. And Wade Trim agrees with the methodology and the results of this traffic impact study for the two study intersections. To alleviate the level of service E condition for the driveway at Beck Road, which is the proposed driveway at Beck Road noted on the plan here, Wade Trim recommends the addition of a short 50-foot right turn lane for the site drive. No improvements are recommended by Wade Trim for the driveway at Cherry Hill Road, and any improvements on Cherry Hill Road or Beck Road or at the intersection would be subject to Wayne County review. So the traffic impact study, we don't often see those at a rezoning, but there are findings as part of a rezoning where we have to look at the impact on township infrastructure, so having a traffic impact study at this point is helpful. For the impact on natural features, according to FEMA, there are no floodplains on the site. The concept plan illustrates wetland area on the south side of the parcel, which is subject to Eagle Review. The Mott Drain is located on the north side of the site and is proposed to be a stormwater outlet, and the area around the drain is vegetated. If the site is rezoned and the applicant submits a site plan application, one of the things that staff will emphasize is locating trees and other vegetation along the drain to buffer it from development. And then finally, the impact on stormwater management. Stormwater management is under the jurisdiction of Wayne County and is reviewed once a development application is submitted, but the conceptual plan does show a stormwater system, and it shows an outlet to Mott Drain. So it does illustrate that there is a stormwater system accounted for in that layout and that subject to engineering review could be feasible. So that concludes staff's report of the proposed rezoning. Our recommendation is based on the standards of the zoning ordinance, is that the rezoning be recommended for approval. So that concludes staff's report, and we'll be happy to take any questions.
Thank you, Patrick. All right, do I have a motion to open a public hearing?
So moved. Second.
All right, we have a motion by Commissioner Weber and support by Commissioner Lee. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Awesome. Would the project sponsor like to add anything to what we've just heard?
You know I always do.
Oh yes, I fully expected it.
Mike Knowles with the Umler Group, 49287 West Road in Wixom, representing Pulte Homes of Michigan. I have Kirk Thomas with me tonight with Pulte Homes. Have a couple of slides, a picture speaks a thousand words, and I'm gonna try not to speak a thousand words because you have a packed agenda. So yes, this is the property, there's a picture of the existing pond that Mr. Sloan pointed out, and one of the homes, the Continental, that Pulte plans to offer here. Next slide, please. So as Mr. Sloan mentioned, we already did the traffic impact study. We've taken care of the wetland delineation on part of the property. We're in the process of expanding that to the 11 acres, that's the subject parcel tonight. Originally, we're just gonna do the two eastern parcels and then assemble the parcel that's before you tonight. The other two parcels are already in R2, so we are seeking to bring this into R2 and then just doing one cohesive development. We've, Umler Group has created, completed the tree survey, so you'll be seeing that at site plan. We've done the ALTA, we've done the soils, the rezoning sign, and the title work. So as you know, this is a process, and should this move forward, you'll be seeing me several other times as we get through site plan and final site plan and all those good steps. So we know that the Planning Commission, that Canton Township likes more information to make a decision. We're happy to provide that, we need to do the work anyways, so we're happy to do that. And it also gives us an opportunity to get feedback from you on some of the site plan items, so that when we come back, if we go forward with the rezoning, we're able to make adjustments to the plan given your direction. Next slide, please. So I won't belabor this, but this is a nice exhibit to show how the piece of property, you'll see this also on the site plan here, the rezoning is in blue and yellow, maize and blue, and the remainder of the property is outlined in red. And so you can see it both on the aerial and on the Canton Township zoning map. You can see almost everything around it. There's R2 or R3 with a few RRs still left. And then, as Mr. Sloan pointed out, on the right is the Canton Township master plan, and it's all in the low-density, two units to the acre. And then there's just a blow-up in the middle of the actual parcel that we're subject to the rezoning. It's an 11-acre piece, currently RR, seeking to go to R2, two to the acre. Next slide, please. Let's see, so here is the proposed site plan that you're not taking action on tonight, but we wanted to show it to you, get some feedback, and so that you could understand what was our purpose of the rezoning. So the rezoning site, the 11-acre site, is outlined in red. The existing pond was, is the pond that you saw a photo of on the first slide. We are proposing a couple of features here. One is that there's open space of 46.9% or 16 acres. That number is a large number, but keep in mind that there's a large portion. I highlighted all the open spaces in green, and where there already was trees underneath, it kind of looks a little bluish, but a good portion of the open space is on the ITC corridor. But you also see a pocket around the existing pond and the wooded area by the existing homestead on this property, and you see a trail in pink that we plan to connect the site. We're proposing sidewalks on both sides of the road, frontage walk along both the frontage on Cherry Hill Road and on Beck Road, and then a connection between the two, so people can walk in a loop or run in a loop as they would. We also have a proposed open space to the east of units 1, 2, 3, 4 on the entrance coming from Cherry Hill Road. The stormwater management systems, which meet Wayne County computations for volume and quality, as well as the outlets and the access, are also part of the open space computation. And the Mott Drain is intended to be left undisturbed and wooded through the middle of the site. We think it'll make a fine feature for people's homes to be adjacent to it. One interesting thing that we did with the land planning here was we sort of flip-flopped one of our initial concept plans and had the homes on the north end of the site backing to the Mott Drain. So if you're to take a photograph of your home, you've got the woods behind your home rather than the ITC towers. And if you have a party and friends coming over, they park along the street or in your driveway, and you are enjoying a patio or deck kind of get-together in the backyard, you've got the drain, you've got the woods. The ITC high-tension power lines, which are noted in those yellow boxes is where those existing towers are, aren't so much imposing, even though they are right there, admittedly. One of our early concepts had an emergency access only going out to Beck Road. In our pre-application conference, we discussed this with township staff. They felt that a full-access road would be correct. I know Commissioner Cruz had asked about that on some other projects previously, and as it turns out, that was a great idea because the traffic study came out with a gold star because of that, and I think a lot of that has to do with if you only had the entrance on Cherry Hill Road and you were going north on back, you'd have to hit that left turn every time, and I think that would have stacked up the queuing distances, so we were able to avoid that. As Mr. Sloan mentioned, this plan, this site plan, you're not voting on this site plan tonight, you're voting on the rezoning, and, but this is what we intend to do. So we would like your feedback on the plan, and we know that we will have to do, meet all of the site plan checklists with the grading and finish off the wetland delineations and all of those things, so we may end up losing a unit here or there just from doing the engineering, and so we'd like to hear your feedback on that. One of the other interesting things is Pulte is proposing this as a true condominium. So it's not a site condo like you normally see where the limited common element acts as a platted lot. So the folks will own their home, and all of the common area is in the condominium. So your snow plowing and your lawn mowing and your maintenance is included. It meets all of the setbacks, the front yard, rear yard, side yard setbacks required in the R2 zoning, but the lawn maintenance, the plowing is included in that, and of course we meet all of the separations required from the buildings that are within that condominium act. Interesting concept. Usually you see this with like an age-targeted or active-adult type of product. These are family homes with this included, and it seems that there are a lot of young families and folks that want to do something else besides shovel snow and mow the grass. People are busy, you have to store all that equipment, and it's something that there seems to be a real need for in the market, so we're proposing to do that. Next slide, please. I won't reiterate all the 10 points that Mr. Sloan went through. It meets all the 10 points, it's consistent with the master plan, and it's consistent with the surrounding developments. This is another one of the Pulte homes that they're planning on proposing here, is the Mercer. Next slide, please. Traffic study, we discussed, it was reviewed by Wade Trim. We were pleased that they agreed with our methodology, our results, and that there will be minimal impact. And Mr. Sloan mentioned that the 50-foot right turn lane at the site drive on Beck Road will be required, and we're to investigate shifting the road south slightly. Next slide. This is just an overall area, I probably should have outlined the site on this one as well, but you can see the farmed fields and the ITC. It's in the same shape that we're talking about here, that's the piece we're talking about, and so I wanted to kind of give you a bird's eye view, so you can see that we're generally consistent in the area with the densities and the zoning. Everything around it is pretty much the same as what we're proposing. And that is all I have for you, and I'm available to answer any questions that you might have after the public hearing is closed.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I have a quick question for you, Mike, actually.
Yes.
On the site plan that you had up there before, there was a stub road going to the, towards the, right under where it says rezoning site.
Yes.
What are, do you have plans to enlarge that? Or thoughts about that?
No, we tried to expand the assembly beyond the three pieces that we have under contract. We were not able to do that, but for good land planning purposes, somebody someday may, perhaps the owners of the pieces, might have that idea in mind. So it makes good sense to have connectivity between the neighborhoods.
Thank you.
So we did add the stub straight.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
To that point, farther to the west, I think it's Canford Park, they have a stub of their own.
Yeah.
And theoretically, if the site in between is ever developed, there could be a connecting road with no additional access onto Cherry Hill. Might not be likely, but it's a possibility.
All right, would any member of the public like to say anything about this project?
I move to close the public hearing.
We'll need a motion to open? Was there a motion?
There was a motion to open, yes.
Okay, thank you.
I think it was Weber and Lee. Thank you.
I move to close the public hearing.
Okay.
Support.
Okay, same, same motion of support by Commissioner Weber and Commissioner Lee. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye, any opposed? Awesome. All right. Commissioner Watkins, you want to start?
Thank you, Madam Chair. So I think this is kind of a no-brainer slam dunk here. I think my only questions, Mike, would be probably geared toward Pulte. What's the status of the parcels, especially the subject parcels, in the contract for purchase at this point? And, well, I'll let you answer that one.
Yes, thank you, Commissioner Watkins. They are all under contract, and they are subject to full entitlements to close on the property. So we have all the time that we need to get the approvals done, and we don't own any of them at the time.
Great. Part two, given the entitlements, what's the project timeline for Pulte?
So this project, if it was rezoned to R2, would be coming in as a straight zoning piece. This meets all of Canton Township's requirements without any need for any variances that we're aware of. Obviously, when we go through the detailed plans, there may be something that comes to our attention, but our intent is straight zoning, which means we're probably looking at one year from start to finish, slightly fewer meetings instead of eight or 10. It'll probably be more like six public meetings and then permits, so we're probably a year away.
Got to thank you, colleagues. I think we'll get multiple bites at the apple on this one, so I don't have any further questions. Thank you, Madam Chair.
My only question, what is the price point about?
So we believe that, obviously, the market will dictate at the time what the price is, but we believe that they're gonna start in the 400s and that most of them will finish in the 500s, mid-500s, low-500s, maybe there are a few in the high 500s, but that's the intent, is to start in the 4s, end in the 5s.
Thank you. That's all I have.
Mr. Egenberger?
Along the same lines, any idea how much the HOAs would be?
I do not have an answer to that question. I know I lived in a similar neighborhood, and it was $1,100, $1,200 a year, and I would, that would be without snow plowing and maintenance, so you're probably looking at, actually, we had snow plowing in that budget too, because it was, you know, the county doesn't always plow the neighborhoods as quickly as you might hope.
Have you ever seen, I've never seen a county.
Yeah, I just wanted to put it delicately, but, so that did have snow plowing in it, but not lawn maintenance, so I think, you know, maybe another 600 a year, you'd probably be 1,800 a year for HOA dues, roughly.
Maybe we'll know more when you come back.
Okay, thank you, I have no other questions.
Awesome, okay. Commissioner Weber?
Not really questions, just a comment, and maybe they're directed more at township staff than they are to the developer. I generally don't have a problem with the development or the rezoning. I get it. I, once again, and my colleagues are probably sick of hearing me talk about this, but... Once again, and my colleagues are probably sick of hearing me talk about this, but I have an issue with the traffic study. I mean, I get that the immediate impact will be minimal if nothing, but I'm really tired of seeing more development happening in this township and us not doing anything about the infrastructure in this, in the township. I'm tired of us being reactive and not proactive. Traffic on Cherry Hill's going to get worse. It's already getting there. We've seen what happens with Ford Road. Warren Road's going to get the same thing, and we're not doing anything about it. We see the infrastructure at the high schools. It's poor. And I just fail to understand why we, as a township, aren't standing up and making the county more aware or making more noise about these issues, because it is just going to get worse. Cherry Hill should be five lanes all the way from Hagerty Road out to Cherry Hill Village. And that's not going to change, but I just need to get that, get that out there because I'm just tired of seeing this and us not doing anything about it. It seems like we're always talking about traffic in this township and nothing ever happens. My other concern, and then maybe it's not a concern, it's more of a question because maybe I don't understand. With the drain there, what are the possible ramifications for flooding downstream? And maybe it's too early to know that, but I just want to make sure that we're properly addressing that issue because I certainly don't want to see us create another issue downstream that we've seen we've had to address in recent years over things like this. So I guess, again, I guess those are questions are directed more to Patrick and the staff rather than they are to the applicant.
Well, with the stormwater management, there's a conceptual stormwater plan shown on the concept plan. And when it gets to engineering review, county engineering will look at it to make sure it meets the county standards. Our engineering division will look at it as well. Where there are opportunities to either exceed a county standard or to make something on the site better than what the county standard otherwise would, our engineering division will work with the applicant to try to achieve that.
I have nothing else.
Commissioner Cruz.
So my main concern is Beck Road traffic. If you've ever gone down northbound on Beck Road, just south of this development at Geddes and Beck, it is the worst intersection. It's way over capacity. And the reason why is, like Doug said, the infrastructure's not built with additional lanes, and it severely needs it. This development is going to bring traffic from Michigan Avenue all the way down Beck Road also, and it's going to make that intersection even worse. I think from like 3:30 to 5:30, it is, it is something to avoid in all directions, Beck and Geddes. So, you know, it's kind of what Doug said, you know, how do we get the county to move on this and do a study because it's, it's going to get worse? Even the traffic study and Wade Trim's assessment says, in the future, beyond the year 2029, traffic on Beck Road will increase, possibly making the level of service of existing traffic, level of service F, exceed level of service F, which is the worst. So it's not getting any better. So for the applicant, I'm going to ask you to do something on Beck Road, on your side at least, for at least tapers and D cell lanes, just like you kind of show that for Cherry Hill. The problem is you don't have a lot of room on Beck Road. So, you know, the idea is, let's try to impact traffic as least as possible when people are entering and accessing your site. I think that's probably the best you can do for this development. That's all I got.
Thank you. Commissioner Janowski, don't forget your mic.
I have no problem with the proposed rezoning. Makes sense. But I do have a concern. I know that with other projects we looked at, neighborhoods and stuff, being around the drain with the grades is a big consideration. My house, when the floods happened, luckily whoever was doing the civil just planned it perfectly where my house never flooded. It came about two feet close, but I know along the drains and other places, other people aren't so lucky. So consideration, I know we look at, you know, whatever, the 100-year is kind of a rare event, but not these days, including with Wayne County's infrastructure and their capabilities to bump the water away, it could lead to some bad outcomes for the folks. That's my consideration, but the rezoning, I have no problem with.
Yeah, I echo what others have said about traffic considerations and concerns, and that's not specifically your problem. It's a county-wide issue that we've really seen. But I think this would be a great project, so I think, I have no problem with the rezoning. So, thank you, Mike. Anyone want to make a motion?
Sure, Madam Chair. I move to recommend approval of the request to rezon parcel number 068-99-0007-001 from RR Rural Residential to R2 Single Family Residential, as the proposal meets the standards of Section 27.06d4 of the zoning ordinance as stated in the staff report.
Second.
Okay. Did we have two seconds?
Lot of enthusiasm.
We have a lot of enthusiasm, absolutely.
I defer to others.
I think the other already deferred to you. So let's see, who do I want?
Put the coin.
So we have a, we have a motion on the table by Commissioner Watkins and support by Commissioner Lee. Any further discussion? All right. All in favor, please say aye.
Roll call vote.
Oh, I'm sorry, you got a call.
I do. I have a job here.
Oh, she just punched me in the arm about it. Okay.
We need to split you two up again.
Yeah. Commissioner Cruz.
Yes.
Commissioner Eickenberger, yes. Commissioner Janowski?
Yes.
Commissioner Lee?
Yes.
Commissioner Watkins?
Yes.
Commissioner Weber?
Yes.
Chairperson Zuber?
Yes. Commissioner, or, eh, motion carries. Thank you very much. Good luck. We'll see you again soon, I'm sure. And thank you for reminding me I get by with a little help from my friends. I would say, but not warmed up. Okay, very good. So we have no old business, so moving right into new business. Item number two on our agenda is 0011-DIR-8307. That is Children's World. We're considering a site plan amendment for parcel number 0, sorry, 011-99-0019-001, which is also known as 7437 North Sheldon Road. The property is located on the west side of Sheldon Road between Warren and Joy Roads. And these are proposed landscaping amendments. So Patrick, tell us more.
Sure, thank you. Children's World Daycare is a daycare center on the west side of Sheldon Road, just north of Warren Road, and it's outlined here in yellow on the sheet. And it's in the R4 zoning district, and childcare uses are special land uses in the R4 district. And the childcare center was originally approved in 1978. And it, at the time it was approved, the board upon recommendation of the, from the Planning Commission, approved the site plan. And with that site plan was also a landscape plan. So on the screen here is the original approved landscape plan from 1978. It's fairly old. A lot of the species are a little outdated and not species that we would be using in landscaping today, just in terms of the species and how those species perform. Recently, the site has had a new owner, and the new owner has been making some changes to the site. Some of the changes have been administratively reviewed by staff. There were, prior to the landscape changes being made, there were some prior changes approved for the facade renovation, for some of the lighting. So there are some improvements on both ends there. And the applicant also proposed some landscaping modifications to update the landscaping. And because there was a previously approved landscape plan that doesn't necessarily comply with today's ordinance, and therefore, a lot of the changes wouldn't necessarily comply with today's ordinance, the applicant is required to submit the landscape plan for consideration and action to, by the Planning Commission. The reason being is that Section 5.07 of the zoning ordinance allows the Planning Commission to approve certain modifications from the landscape requirements of the zoning ordinance under certain circumstances that are listed in the ordinance and in our staff report. Notably, there are three standards where there's a requirement for this particular use where the applicant doesn't meet the letter of the ordinance. And in many cases, the site hasn't met the letter of the landscape ordinance since the current ordinance was adopted back in 1989. The first standard is off-street parking screening. The ordinance requires a four-foot-high wall along all sides of any off-street parking area that serves a non-residential use in a residential district. That's a pretty solid screen in terms of what's required. And in this case, this would be on the north and south sides of the parking lot. I'll zoom into the landscape plan here just to make it a little bit more visible, and I'll turn it also so that north is up. So it's a black-and-white plan, so it still might be a little difficult to tell, but Sheldon Road is here on the right side, and then Meadow Creek Lane is a private road to the north, or it's a residential development road. I'm not sure if it's private or public. So the letter of the ordinance would require a four-foot-high wall on the south side and the north side of the parking lot, something that it's never had. Instead of that, the applicant proposes to supplement the existing evergreens that are in the area with additional evergreens to help with the screening. There's evergreen screening on the north side on the neighboring site, and the applicant proposes to fill in those areas along with existing evergreens to try to buffer as much as possible and improve what's already there. To the south of the property, this is property owned by Canton Township, and there are no immediate plans to develop that property or sell the property. And the area that is owned by the township, I'll bring up the aerial map here, just, whoops, Canton Township owns a small sliver of property to the south. And then at the northwest corner of Sheldon and Warren Road, Canton Township owns all of this property with a large pond and large wetlands. So there's no development proposed on any of those sites. And so the effect of putting a wall there on the south side wouldn't be helpful because you're just screening from something that is unlikely to be developed. The second standard where a modification is requested is from parking lot landscaping. The zoning ordinance requires 475 square feet of interior parking lot landscaping and two trees. The previously approved interior landscape on the 1978 plans showed an interior parking lot landscaping, but a previous owner had removed some of that interior landscaping sometime between 2005 and 2010, and that area now includes parking spaces. The new owner proposes to, rather than fill that in with landscaping, the new owner wants to keep the number of spaces to service staff and parents that are dropping off and picking up. So the new owner proposes to supplement the front yard landscaping with two additional trees so that those two, those requirements for the two trees are met. And the current owner proposes to classify some of the area on the east side of the easternmost parking row as parking lot landscaping. This buffer from Sheldon Road to the parking spaces is wider than the buffer required by the ordinance. So the applicant wants to classify some of that as parking lot landscaping and bolster it with additional shrubs. It's a 20-foot, it's a 40-foot-wide buffer where 20 feet is required. So with the trees there and the additional shrub row, the applicant is proposing to either meet or exceed that requirement. And finally, the third requirement where the applicant requests a modification is from the protective screening requirement, which requires a four-foot-high berm or an obscuring wall wherever a non-residential use in a residential district abuts land zone for residential purposes. That would require a berm throughout the entire rear yard of the childcare facility. There's currently no berm there. There wasn't a berm approved in 1978. There was a staggered row of Scotch pines going around the perimeter, but Scotch pines are not good for screening trees. They're good for a woodland or a forest, maybe a Christmas tree when they're small, but not for screening. So the applicant is proposing to, or has put in a solid six-foot-high wooden fence that will screen the use from adjacent properties. And really, the main areas to screen from are the residential areas to the north and to the west. So there's a fence there in the rear of the facility. I think there's been a fence there for a number of years. It's been used as outdoor play area, especially where those Scotch pines were previously planted. So really, they've just been an area that's been used for play since 1978, as far as we can tell. So there's really no impact to modifying this and requiring instead that there's the fence in the rear yard, the six-foot-high privacy fence that will provide the screening, probably better screening than it's ever had, and then whatever trees are there that are safely installed to keep those as well. So in conclusion, Section 5.07 of the zoning ordinance allows the Planning Commission to approve modifications from landscape requirements of Article 5, provided such adjustments are in keeping with the intent of the zoning ordinance. And there's a few criteria listed in terms of unique features of a site, parking vehicular circulation or land use that's unique, or where better landscaping is proposed than required by the ordinance, or that the required ordinance would not have the intended effect, and that there's an alternative that's better. And then finally, if the public benefit intended by the landscape regulations can be better achieved with a plan that varies from the strict requirements, in which case we believe the proposed plan does. So our recommendation on the proposed modifications from the three sections of the ordinance is approval. And that concludes our staff report, and we'll be happy to take any questions.
Thank you, Patrick. Is the project sponsor here? I thought that might be you. Yeah. Would you please tell us who you are, give us your address for the record, please?
My address, like, or the center's address?
Either one. I don't, I mean, does it matter?
My name is Stephanie Gerard, and I live at 982 Arcoa Street in La Boga. But I will be the director at Children's World.
Awesome.
Yeah, it's exciting.
Do you have anything to add to what?
I just want to let you know that we put a lot of remodeling into the center.
You speak into the microphone, I'm sorry, because otherwise the video won't pick you up.
We have done a lot of remodeling, so the whole center is all brand-new. The whole face of the center is brand-new. And this side right here at the south, it is all woods, so there's not, like, I don't think that there should be a wall there. And then over here by where the condos are at, there is already some really good bushes, especially by the parking lot. What we were trying to do is add some more just so then there is that privacy. And then the front, we do have the shrubs planned to make sure that the lights also won't shine into the residential area as well.
Thank you. Great. All right. I'll start down at this end. Commissioner Janowski, do you have any questions or thoughts?
No comment.
Okay. Commissioner Cruz? Okay. Commissioner Weber?
No comment.
All right. Commissioner Eickenberger?
No comment.
Gosh, everyone has no comment. Commissioner Lee, no comment?
Nothing.
No questions, Madam Chair.
Okay. I have no problem with this. I think that it'll be much improved over what's been there for so long.
It's so beautiful. I don't know what made it feel. I do know that we have really big plans for marketing, a really big open house plan. I've been in childcare since 2003, so I am, I'm ready to market and I'm ready to get these kiddos in there.
Excellent. All right. Do I hear a motion?
I'll move, move to approve the site plan landscaping revisions for the Children's World Childcare Center at 7437, 7437 North Sheldon Road on parcel number 011-99-0019-001, as illustrated in the proposed landscape plan, including the noted modifications from Article 5 of the zoning ordinance pursuant to Section 5.07.
Excellent. Support?
Support.
All right. We have a motion by Commissioner Lee and support. We have a motion by Commissioner Lee and support by Commissioner Weber. Any further discussion? All right. Commissioner Egenberger, would you please call the vote?
Sure. Commissioner Cruz. Commissioner Egenberger, yes. Commissioner Janowski.
Yes.
Commissioner Lee.
Yes.
Commissioner Watkins.
Yes.
Commissioner Weber.
Yes.
And Chairperson Zuber.
Yes. Motion carries. Good luck.
Boo, thank you.
Yeah. All right. Patrick, we have another item on the agenda. Item number 098-ADS-8197, that is the MCWS Medina Activity Center addition, where we're considering a site plan amendment for parcel numbers zeros, sorry, 098-99-0020-702, which is 1905 South Hagerty Road, and 098-99-0022-000, which is also known as 2009 South Hagerty Road. The property is located on the southeast corner of South Hagerty Road and Palmer Road. This is a proposed addition to an existing structure. So Patrick, tell us all about it.
Sure. Thank you.
Yeah.
The Medina Activity Center is owned and operated by Muslim community of Western suburbs, and it's located at the southeast corner of Hagerty Road and Palmer Road. And the current uses consist of assembly uses, prayer halls, classrooms, religious services, youth lounges, business offices, administrative offices, community library, a multipurpose hall, and a number of accessory uses within the facility. The site is zoned O1 Office Zoning District, and the uses that I mentioned are permitted uses in the office district. And the office district also allows for accessory uses in the O1 District. And some of the accessory uses include a cafe, a fitness area, and a gift shop. Those are small uses. They're shown on the floor plan. They're pretty much ancillary. Think of, like, if you were at a large medical clinic and they had a little coffee stand or a little cafe, that's basically the impact that you're looking at there, where it's accessory to the use itself. No one will make a special trip just to go to the cafe. So that's, those are a few accessory uses. And the proposal is for the owner to construct an attached community center/fieldhouse, 41,558 square feet, on the southern side of the existing building. And the community center and fieldhouse will provide space for sports such as basketball, tennis, volleyball, badminton, pickleball, and soccer. The west end of the building will include amenities to support its main athletic functions such as a fitness training area, children's indoor play structure, a lobby, and mezzanines for viewing and storage. Also, the area will be used periodically for larger events and services, so it can be repurposed on a temporary basis depending on the needs of the owner and the community. With the schedule of regulations, the site plan submitted illustrates compliance with the requirements of the O1 District for setbacks. One item to note is that in the O1 District, the maximum building height is 30 feet, and the height of the proposed community center and fieldhouse is 34 feet, based on the pitch of the roof and being able to get the height needed for the athletic activities indoor. At the May 9, 2024 Zoning Board of Appeals meeting, the Zoning Board of Appeals approved variants to allow the community center fieldhouse to be 34 feet, based on the applicable standards of the zoning ordinance for a variance. The connection portion of the addition is 30 feet high and meets the requirements of the ordinance. Therefore, the height that exceeds 30 feet on the fieldhouse and community center, that additional height was approved by the zoning board of appeals. So that was at the May meeting. There have been some planner revisions unrelated to that variance that have taken place since then, so the site plan now comes before the Planning Commission for consideration. If the Planning Commission recommends approval of the site plan, then the plan will proceed to the Township Board. For the site access, the site will maintain its existing access points on Palmer Road to the north and Hagerty Road to the west. With some of the items where our engineering division has questioned the traffic and the access management, the applicant has submitted a traffic impact assessment prepared by Fleece and Vanderbrink. And the main purpose of that traffic impact analysis was to assess the impact of the left-turn movement from Palmer Road turning left into the site. And as we can see on the aerial here, there's not really a long area to stack cars if there's a westbound vehicle that wants to turn left from the Palmer Road access. So the applicant is proposing to include no-left-turn signs on both sides of Palmer Road facing northbound, northward on Palmer Road. And the Canton Township Engineering Division recommends that the proposed signage is as an acceptable solution. The no-left-turn prohibition is recommended by the traffic impact assessment and is proposed by the applicant. During times when there may be large events where the proposed parking lot will fill up, this is something where the applicants may have staff out there and having more of a messaging initiative to let patrons and visitors know that access into the site coming from the east would be through Hagerty Road. So instead of using the turn here on Palmer, traffic would go up to the intersection of Palmer and Hagerty. In the long term, we recommend investigating whether MDOT approval would be possible to extend the left-turn lane on Palmer Road eastward. And the reason that this can't be extended any further is the black lines here, that's the road right-of-way. And as these black lines angle here, that's the MDOT right-of-way as it approaches I-275. So as Palmer Road approaches I-275, this right-of-way is actually under the jurisdiction of MDOT and not necessarily Wayne County. So there would just be a different process, probably a longer process, in order to get any kind of wider lanes or extended turn lane on Palmer Road in this area. Next, I'll bring up the addition plans themselves, so it'll be a little bit easier to discuss There we go. So the area that's shaded and colored here on the south side of the site represents the proposed addition. And so the, the applicant also owns this long parcel on the south end where the majority of the addition will go. So this dark shaded area here, south of the existing building, this is the proposed addition. And this vacant parcel on the south side is owned by the applicant. And that parcel goes all the way from Hagerty Road on the west side, all the way to 275 on the east side. And the applicant proposes not just the addition, but when traffic enters from Hagerty Road, traffic here will turn right going southbound. There's parking along Hagerty Road, and then traffic will turn going eastbound to get to the larger parking lot in the rear. So oftentimes, there will be parking available in the front. If not, they can either go to the north or go behind the building where the rest of the parcel is proposed to be parking. The applicant proposes 123 new net spaces, which will raise the number of parking spaces to 374 for the entire site. Based on the standards of Article 4 of the zoning ordinance, it's difficult to really peg exactly what the number must be for parking just because of the multitude of uses, and those uses occur at different times. So there could be a case to be made where either more parking could be required and a case to be made where less parking can be required. It's all going to depend on the activity and the timing of it. So we recommend approval of the proposed number of parking spaces for the facility. If parking demand is higher, the, the applicant would have to determine whether to stagger events, shuttle patrons from off-site, or acquire adjacent property to construct more parking. So that's something that can be evaluated in the future. Some improvements that are being made are, there are some existing sidewalks along the frontages of Hagerty Road and Palmer Road. The applicant proposes to add sidewalk connections to these sidewalks. For example, along Palmer Road, there's a sidewalk connection that will connect the Palmer Road sidewalk and connect that to the building. And then along Hagerty Road, there's a proposed sidewalk to connect Hagerty to the addition on the addition's north side and then on the addition's south side. So there are some pedestrian improvements between the facility, the building, the addition, and the adjacent sidewalk network along Hagerty and along Palmer. For the architecture, the ordinance requires a minimum of 50% brick for all office buildings. The existing building and proposed addition exceed 50% brick. The remaining materials will consist of glass and metal panel. The additions propose to, propose to complement the existing building with its red brick, but also add some unique brick color, which is a gray and a different architectural style to distinguish the proposed connecting buildings and the community center and fieldhouse. There will be some HVAC units located on the rooftop. The architectural sheets show that there's a parapet that will screen them, but the sizes are not yet known. So at the time of building permit review, we'll evaluate the rooftop screening more to see if a higher parapet or screening around each unit would be required. For the landscaping, the landscape plan submitted addresses the standards of Article 5 of the zoning ordinance in the amended areas of the site for the frontage, the foundation, detention pond, and parking lot landscaping. The existing site that's unchanged is required to be maintained according to the previously approved landscape plans. There are a few discrepancies with the proposed landscape plan, most of which are related to species, type, sizes, and counts. Therefore, we recommend that those discrepancies be resolved prior to Township Board review of the plans. The minimum required depth of foundation landscaping is 10 feet. The areas on the south and north sides of the proposed addition show foundation depths ranging from four to five feet. Section 5.07 of the zoning ordinance allows the Planning Commission to approve modifications from the landscape requirements of Article 5 of the zoning ordinance, provided those adjustments are in keeping with the intent of the zoning ordinance. Those narrow areas for landscaping contain the necessary shrubs and trees selected in those areas. The trees that are selected are column in shape, so they're selected to survive in those narrow areas. Some of the required trees have been allocated to wider foundation landscape areas on the west and east sides of the addition, so the numerical counts are still met. Because the plan meets those standards for the required number of trees and shrubs, and there's an attempt to have foundation landscaping along those required sides of the building, we recommend the modification from the foundation landscape depth be approved on the north and south sides of the addition as proposed on the plans. There's a stormwater pond proposed to be enlarged eastward onto property that's owned by Canton Township. The determination regarding whether this location will be approved will be made by the Township Board when it reviews the site plan. And I'll zoom in a little bit on the plan here that illustrates it. So here, the current pond is on the subject owner's property, and then there's a proposed expanded area eastward onto a property owned by Canton Township. In, on the aerial map here, this will illustrate it a little bit more where this area is owned by Canton Township. And then this area, it's undeveloped, it's heavily wooded, will extend, it extends eastward all the way to 275. There are no known plans by the township to develop on this vacant property or to build anything on the vacant property. I'm not sure exactly what the plan was when the township acquired it, but it can be strategic in the sense of being adjacent to 275 and adjacent to Palmer Road. If there was ever any kind of widening or drainage improvements for those corridors, that's a strategic piece for the township to own to allow for certain public improvements adjacent. In the case of the proposed widening of a pond, that's something that would be, yeah, we can look at those, and after looking at the pond, that would be something that would be evaluated by the Township Board. And some of the evaluation criteria would be whether there are any divisions or departments that may have use of the vacant property. So far, we haven't seen any that would preclude a proposed pond in some form. Other types of evaluation criteria would be if the township is willing to have the pond in that location, whether the township would want to have a drainage easement, or whether the township would entertain selling the property to an adjacent landowner. So those are decisions to be made by the Township Board in its evaluation criteria, not just of the site plan, but whenever it buys property or sells property, the same evaluation the Township Board does whenever they have those real estate transactions. So there's still some work to be done on that, but something that we wanted to have go through the Planning Commission process first, so that if the plan was otherwise in good shape, then the township would know what the proposal is at that point and then be able to make a decision. Moving on to the tree survey, there are some discrepancies in the tree survey. There's partial mitigation according to Article 5A of the zoning ordinance, and there are some discrepancies on the tree survey. So there's some additional work to be done there. Nothing too major. I think there's a strong attempt to mitigate the trees in, in a major way according to Article 5A. We've got some questions of whether there could be additional mitigation in order to meet some of the numerical requirements of the mitigating trees in Article 5A. So we're working with the applicant on that, and that's something that we recommend resolving prior to review by the Township Board. If there's any kind of modification from Article 5A or a different form of mitigation other than the trees, then we would recommend that that evaluation decision be made by the Board of Trustees. The last item I'll discuss is the lighting. There's a photometric plan for new lighting at the Hagerty Road entrance and around areas of the building addition and the new parking lot. These new areas comply with the illumination requirements of the zoning ordinance, so there'll be plenty of light. We, we do recommend some revisions to the photometric plan that include the existing lighting on the remainder of the site, just to ensure that those areas meet the requirements of Section 2.13 of the zoning ordinance as well. And 2.13 requires areas to be illuminated to be at least 0.3-foot candles. So with that, staff's recommendation is approval of the site plan amendment for the building addition at the site, including approval of 374 parking spaces and approval of the modification from the minimum foundation landscape depths on the north and south sides of the addition as proposed on the plans pursuant to Section 5.07 of the zoning ordinance, and subject to the following conditions being met prior to Township Board review of the site plan: first, revising the landscape plan and course, and correcting discrepancies pursuant to Article 5; second, revising the tree survey and removal plan pursuant to Article 5A, with the mitigation plan being subject to review by the Township Board; and finally, three, revising the lighting plan to comply with Section 2.13. That concludes our staff comments, and we'll be happy to take any questions.
Thank you, Patrick. The project sponsor is here. Please tell us your name and address for the record.
Haras Ahmed. I'm the president of the Muslim community of the Western suburbs of MCWS, and it's our honor to be here in front of you, in front of the commission. You know, our community's been here, been a part of Canton since at least the 1980s, and has grown with Canton, along with Canton. We have a vibrant community and interwoven. It's intergenerational. It's very diverse. And, you know, along with the community needs, you know, along with the community growth, community needs have grown as well. We were fortunate enough in 2019 to take over the effectively abandoned ITT Tech Building, which sat empty for quite some time, and we feel that it's now turned into a vibrant community center. It is, has activities morning to evening, and of, you know, a whole variety of activities, educational activities, youth activities, senior activities, social activities, so a variety of things. But one of the things that's missing is the athletic space. That's one of the primary areas that we've, when we surveyed the community and we asked them, you know, what's needed, and we look at it, it's really missing that component. And for us, we would obviously like to serve that, but we really, one of the key principles for us is intergenerational. We want to build our community to be an intergenerational community and create intergenerational connections. connections. And, you know, Michigan, we have beautiful weather. We appreciate it. We appreciate all the seasons, but six months out of the year at least, you know, we're not able to necessarily do the activities we'd like to outside. So an indoor facility is something that we think is necessary. Part of the design in this fieldhouse, when we say intergenerational, we've put a track on the same level as the other activities, so that way people of all ages are able to walk around, engage with the activities that are going on. We have made space for indoor tennis and pickleball, which pickleball is this thing that is just growing. Everybody knows this. You put pickleball anywhere, you can't put, you know, pickleball courts. But it has a unique feature that it is intergenerational. I have seen athletic 18-year-olds excited to play with seasoned 70-something-year-olds, and it's amazing, you know, to see that. So it just is kind of a metaphor for the whole project. We have viewing and observation decks, so again, to allow for people, they just want to come there, they want to study, they want to socialize, they want to do whatever they may do, but they can engage with the activities that are going on in the main space. So with all that said, yeah, you know, that's the general gist of what we're trying to do, and trying to make it a multipurpose space. It will also allow for assembly from time to time for, you know, the main purpose would be the athletic facilities, but from time to time, if we need it for larger assembly, then we can use it as a complement to the existing facilities. And that's where the parking space also comes in. We're trying to plan ahead. We feel that this would be a benefit to the whole entire area there, because we do, we are part of the main campus as well, along with Creston Academy. And so we know that, you know, parking mitigation is required. This will take some of the load off, because we will be able to, for larger events and things like that, use this and supplement with that parking. So with that said, yeah, that's really all I have to say, and I'm happy to answer any questions.
Thank you. I'm going to start down here with Commissioner Weber, I'm sorry, Commissioner Watkins.
Thank you so much. Harris, good to see you again, man. On the, can we go back to the rendering on the south side? I did, and I'm assuming this isn't the final site plan, but there's quite a bit of parking on that south side. I think the capacity was almost 400. Can you just speak a little bit more to, I mean, what that looks like in terms of an actual? Because when you start to think about the corner, at any point in time, give it a, I don't know, a service or an activity, that's a ton of cars that would either have to enter northbound, southbound on Hagerty, limited capacity there, even more limited capacity on Palmer, especially coming over the bridge, right? So if you could speak to that real quick, that's my only question.
Sure, sure. And I'm sure Patrick can help me out here, too. But Hagerty, when we looked at it, you know, Hagerty itself, I think, is probably five lanes over there. It's pretty wide, and so we think it's got the capacity in terms of ingress, egress. If it's a large event like that, we actually already do this. We would have traffic management, and we would funnel, you know, kind of people through. They tend to trickle over a period of time, you know, so it would fill up over a period of time, not all at once, but it would fill up over a period of time if we were to use the full capacity of the facility.
Yeah, so we've got a dedicated left-turn lane here at Hagerty.
And a lot of repairs.
Yes.
Piecemeal.
Right, finally.
That's all, ma'am chair. Thank you.
Thank you. Commissioner Lee?
No, I have nothing.
Commissioner Egenberger? No? No? Okay. Commissioner Weber?
I have no comments or questions.
Who makes the decision of allowing a property owner to use Canton Township property? The board? They solely make that decision?
Yeah, in this case, it would be a board decision. Sometimes, depending on the use of property, if it's temporary use, it may be whatever the subject department is. I think the easiest case would be Leisure Services Department. If someone rents a pavilion, they have a rental agreement. In a case like this, where it's semi-permanent use of township property, where there's water drained on a township property, and this wouldn't be the only one of its kind, there are a couple of cases, maybe more than a couple of cases in the township, where there's a detention pond serving off-site property, but it's on a township property. But to answer your question, this would be a decision by the Board of Trustees. If it's a real estate transaction where something's being sold, it's a board action. Or if it's a drainage easement agreement, that would also be a board action to execute that agreement.
So it's all the board?
Correct.
If I may comment on our intentions with that as well, it's one thing, our goal would be to design it as an amenity as well, hopefully, obviously in addition to the functional requirements, but to make it so that there could actually be, you know, a walking path around it or something.
Well, that'd be great.
Yeah. Yeah, we think it would be a great amenity.
A pond that big, you know, I encourage you to put at least a fountain for, like, irrigation.
Absolutely, yeah.
Prevents all that moss from growing on the side.
Absolutely.
It works.
Yeah, and again, we want to make it an amenity, so that would be part of it, for sure.
Yeah. So just a word of, like, once you put an easement on that, you can't take it away now, you know? So I just want to alert you and the board that it puts a restriction on that property if Canton decides to sell it. Now it's, you know, it's...
Permanent.
It's a permanent burden now, so just an alert.
Yeah, we've done some internal evaluations in terms of if there's any future municipal use for the property. And we've looked at where the sidewalk terminates here. If there was ever a sidewalk to extend eastward, there would be some space east of the sidewalk to do that. Looking at some of the features, there's nothing that's really come up from a recreation or a public safety standpoint for use of the property. This may be a property in the future that may have some location advantages for telecommunication use, and there may be some other areas of the site, maybe closer to the highway where that use could be served. But in our discussions of other municipal uses, we haven't come up with any others talking internally about that.
Okay. Can you pan down to the east side of the parking lot? So I notice you've got like a one and a half or two-foot little green belt. Does that comply with ordinance? Don't you need a bigger green belt from the property line? I've never seen that, that two-foot like that.
Yeah, for industrial and commercial property, the parking can go up to the property line. It just can't go over the property line. And one of the items that we'd recommended is that the parking spaces on the south side be 19 feet. The minimum depth of a stall is 19 feet. Stalls can be lowered to 17 feet if there is an adjacent five feet of open landscaping, which in this case there's not. So we would recommend this being the full 19 feet, which would probably mean making the green space even narrower or reconfiguring something else there. But it can't be to the edge of the lot line.
To actually build a curb you're encroaching on the other property, that's the reason that that's usually not allowed right there.
Yeah.
To put the forms for the concrete, I mean, you could do it, like, that's pushing it right there. But ordinance doesn't have a parking setback to the property line?
Not when it's non-residential districts in this case. Now, if it were a residential district adjacent to it, that would be different.
Yeah.
And then...
Interesting.
Yeah, so in the case of the curb, they may need a grading easement or a construction easement from the adjacent property owner.
Which we've actually discussed with the property owner already. And it's light industrial to the south, so, and then the existing property right now, it's fairly similar situation already in our existing, where we're coming right up, well, before we bought the parcel that we are currently putting this on, that was already abiding that effectively.
So on, can we go to the landscape plan, LS-1? On the very east side, it looks like you'll need an easement to plant those trees, correct? Because if that's the property line, you're planting trees way off your property. You'll need an MDOT approval for that in addition to that south side.
I believe that would be township property with that, not Patrick, but...
If that's 275 right there, that's MDOT.
Oh, is it?
And that is not an easy approval.
Yeah, the township parcel is unique. There's a little peninsula that runs southward. So the parcel itself, I thought it went to 275, and it looks like it almost does, but there's a little sliver between the two where there's township ownership.
Okay. So you need Canton Township for that, too? Board approval for that?
Yeah, and there may be, with the tree mitigation plan, we're still working with the applicants on that, but if there's mitigation required where they have to plant more trees than are shown on the plan, our ordinance does allow for off-site planting. So if there's any tree planting on the township property that can help the township property and the community at large, that's something that we can discuss with them.
So the other thing relating to landscape, it seems like there should be more landscape islands in the parking lot. Doesn't ordinance require, I mean, there's hardly any. Is that correct?
Based on the standards of the ordinance, I think it's between 5 and 6,000 square feet of interior landscape area. One of our, one of our staff comments to the applicant in one of the staff reviews was to provide the square footages of each parking lot island where there's landscaping. So there's one here on the north side, there's a few internal to the site. There's not a, and then there's farther west. I'm not sure what that all comes out to and if there's a possibility of adding more.
I would check that. I mean, this is a lot of pavement.
Yeah.
And I think our ordinance guards against, you know, we need some shade in parking lots. I guess I would just check it, you know?
Yeah, and there's...
Doesn't look right.
Yeah, and they also have to add in the existing parking lot island landscaping, too, with the total number of spaces. So if they meet, if they can meet the standard and show that they meet it in the landscape plan, then it proceeds to the board. If for some reason it can't be met, then they can opt to revise the plan to meet it, or if they request a modification from that, they can return to the planning commission with that request.
The last thing is, do you have any bike racks on the site?
We don't right now. We do not currently...
Would encourage that highly, especially with a community center...
Yeah.
And the youth and all these programs.
No, that's a great, it's a great suggestion.
It's good to encourage non-motorist activity.
Yeah.
That's all I got.
Thank you. Commissioner Janowski?
I like the project. I like that it's cogenerational. I think it's adding a lot to the community. First thing that I see is all that pavement and the valuation of the parking itself. Really, we always like to have less pavement...
Sure.
Because of runoff onto, onto the drains and then all over and backing up and all the costs and stuff. Secondly, when I look at the elevation, I know Canton approved this overall fieldhouse, the actual scale of this building. Consciously, people don't, I'm trying to provide a positive criticism or an opportunity. People don't understand how that actually, how that scale feels. See? When you look at the scale and you think about it...
Wait, you won't be recorded if you don't talk into your mic, sorry.
And laser pen.
Patrick will use his hand there.
Okay. So they broke down the facade very nicely, but as a person, when you get close up to there, you have about, you know, like, I think it's like about four feet in between with landscaping buffering that. If there's any way you could bring that out, or alternatively, there's more like deciduous column trees that go up higher. Because when you put landscape against a building, it actually softens it. So as a person, when you're standing outside there, subconsciously, you don't realize it, but when you're in certain spaces...
Understood, yeah.
And there's nothing you can do to the south side. I looked at that, and people are just driving through that, but same thing on the other side. If you could do that, there's a potential that you could, let's see, let me go to the plan. There is one area where you could pull the parking in potentially. But that's my main concern. I like the project. I think it'll bring a lot to the community, and congratulations on bringing it to us.
Thank you. Yeah, no, it's great feedback. Thank you.
Thank you.
And did I mispronounce it? It's Medina?
It's Medina.
I apologize. I grew up near Medina, Ohio.
Yeah, I know, Medina, Ohio, I think, or Medina, yeah, yeah.
Yeah, thank you.
But that even was named after Medina, so...
Ah, okay.
Yeah, that's right. That's right.
Be careful how you're aging yourself.
Thank you. I think this is really nice. I think this is very nice. I think that, you know, it's, you've taken a prefabricated metal building, I assume, and you've made it pretty nice-looking. And I really liked the connector, the way that that is designed and will put the two buildings together. So architecturally, I think it's, I think it's really nice for what you're doing. I mean, I think it'll be a very nice improvement. And then functionally, I appreciate the site. I think that'll really serve the community nicely. So I wish you all the best.
Thank you. Appreciate it.
Yeah, thank you. Do I hear a motion?
I have, ma'am chair. I move to recommend approval of the site plan amendment for the building addition at 1905 South Hagerty Road and 2009 South Hagerty Road, parcels number 098-99-0020-702 and 098-99-0022-000, including approval of 374 parking spaces and approval of a modification from the minimum foundation landscape depths on the north and south sides of the addition as proposed on the plans pursuant to Section 5.07 of the zoning ordinance, and subject to the following conditions being met prior to township board review of the site plan: one, revising the landscape plan and correcting discrepancies pursuant to Article 5; two, revising the tree survey and removal plan pursuant to Article 5A, with the mitigation plan being subject to review by the township board; and three, revising the lighting plan to comply with Section 2.13.
Do we hear support?
Support.
Last time, I think I gave it to Commissioner Lee. So we have a motion by Commissioner Watkins and support by Commissioner Weber. Any further discussion? Commissioner Egenberger, could you please call the vote?
Sure. Commissioner Cruz?
Yes.
Commissioner Egenberger, yes. Commissioner Janowski?
Yes.
Commissioner Lee?
Yes.
Commissioner Watkins?
Yes.
Commissioner Weber?
Yes.
And Chairperson Zuber?
Yes. Motion carries. Good luck.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Great. Next item on our agenda, you guys have been so patient. The Rusty Nail Lounge, we have item number 050-DIR-7893. We're considering a site plan amendment for several parcels. I'm not going to read all those numbers. Many parcels, wow. Also known as 43845 Ford Road. The property is located on the south side of Ford Road between Sheldon and Morton, not Motten, Taylor Road. Proposed use is to resurface and expand the parking lot and create outdoor dining areas and other site changes. I'm excited about outdoor dining, so Patrick, tell us more.
Sure, thank you. The Rusty Nail Lounge is proposing to amend its site plan to add outdoor dining to the east side of the building, and the applicant is also proposing additional landscaping, installing a stormwater pond, constructing a dumpster enclosure, adding curbing and wheel chocks around the perimeter of the parking lot, installing site lighting that's compliant with the ordinance, and creating a formal driveway circulation from Marlow Street. So there are a number of site improvements that are going to come a long way towards compliance with the zoning ordinance. The site and Rusty Nail have existed for several decades, and it predates our current ordinance and maybe some of the previous ordinances as well. The building itself and the pre-existing perimeter of the parking lot are not proposed to expand. The existing zoning of the site is C2 Community Commercial and CBD Central Business District overlay along Ford Road and in the DDA district. For the land use and the zoning, the current use of the site is a restaurant and bar, which is permitted in the C2 zoning district. And on the, I'll show you the map, the zoning map of the site. It's a little irregular, but there are some other sites that are like it in the township. It's, um, it's a, it's a little irregular, but there are some other sites that are like it in the, in the township. So on the north side of the site, it's zoned C2. That's where, uh, the restaurant, the outdoor dining, um, and much of the parking is. So along Ford Road, this is Ford Road here, uh, that's the C2 zoning district. In the middle of the site, uh, which consists of just the parking area and the proposed dumpster, it's zoned OSP off-street parking. And off-street parking is, uh, a district that allows for commercial businesses to use for some of their parking because as Ford Road developed several decades ago, um, there are many small businesses along Ford Road and the parcels were not deep enough for larger parking lots behind. So the OSP district allows, it was put into effect to allow for commercial businesses so that they could acquire property to put in additional parking. Um, there are, um, a handful of OSP zoned areas of the community and this is, uh, one of the more prominent ones. And then, uh, farther to the south of the OSP, um, this, uh, these shaded areas are zoned residential. Uh, they're currently heavily wooded and the proposal from the plan is to install a stormwater pond there. So, um, based on the site, proposed site changes, uh, the impervious surface coverage is probably not going to increase that much based on the existing hard surfacing of the site. But there will be a stormwater pond added that will, um, significantly improve the stormwater performance of the site. For the scheduled regulations, the footprint of the building is not proposed to change. So, um, the minimum setback requirements of the C2 district and the CBD overlay, um, are, uh, 50 feet for the front yard, 15 feet for the side yard and 30 feet for the rear yard. Uh, the current front yard setback is 9.77 feet, uh, from the Ford Road right-of-way line and 23.67 feet from Marlowe Street right-of-way line. Uh, these are existing non-conformities that are not proposed to change. Uh, the building meets the minimum side and rear yard setback requirements, provided all eight of the lots are combined. And we recommend that all eight of the lots be combined as a condition of approval. Uh, for the outdoor dining, that's regulated in a separate section of the zoning ordinance. The outdoor dining area is designed to comply with the requirements of the ordinance, except that the proposed outdoor dining area is located within the front yard setback of Ford Road. That being 25 feet from, uh, the right-of-way line of Ford Road. The minimum setback, um, the proposed outdoor dining area is six feet from the Ford Road right-of-way. Uh, based on MDOT's most recent Boulevard plans, uh, there's no additional right-of-way proposed by MDOT along the front edge of Rusty Nail. Uh, section 6.10D footnote E of the zoning ordinance, uh, allows, in the Central Business District, for setbacks adjacent to a street to be reduced upon recommendation from the planning commission, that the reduced setbacks will meet a specific and desirable site design objective. Uh, the criteria that are evaluated include the setback of buildings on adjacent sites, the length of buildings along the street, the overall size and massing of the building, and how effectively the street facade creates an urban scale and context appropriate. Um, we recommend that the outdoor dining area be permitted to be six feet from the Ford Road right-of-way as it will have a fence barrier from Ford Road and will contribute to pedestrian activity along Ford Road. Uh, for comparison purposes, um, farther east on Ford Road, Potbelly has an outdoor dining area on the north side and that outdoor dining area is about six feet from the Ford Road right-of-way line. Uh, for the access management and circulation, the site currently has one paved access from Ford Road, um, which is not proposed to change, and two, uh, has two gravel access drives from Marlowe Street, uh, that are relatively informal. Uh, the Marlowe Street driveways are existing non-conformities based on their location and, um, the owner proposes to, um, create two distinct driveway areas. Um, there's a unprotected utility pole that, um, the owner proposes to protect by separating the driveways. Uh, so there would be significant improvements to the access management from, uh, Marlowe Street. Uh, the Marlowe Street driveway would be 26.7 feet wide, um, although it's less than the minimum required width of 30 feet required by the ordinance. Um, it's not less than the current driveway on the north side of the utility pole. And paving and curbing improvements will make this driveway more conforming. And the utility pole will, uh, be protected by a new curb. On the interior of the parking lot, all drives will be at least 22 feet wide, which is the minimum required by the ordinance. Uh, for parking and loading, the ordinance requires a minimum of 60 parking spaces for restaurant and bar slash lounge uses, and there are 60 spaces proposed. Uh, the current number of parking spaces on the site is unknown based on some of the historical configuration of the lot. Um, but the boundaries, um, aren't subject to, uh, very much change. But there will be curbing added along the west perimeter and wheel chocks added to spaces abutting the south and east perimeters. So the boundary of the parking area will be more defined and those spaces will be more defined too. So circulation and parking will become easier. The, um, it's not noted in our report, but there's currently no loading area that is, um, on the, uh, previously approved plan. So the loading takes place during off-hours. The, uh, start of the use is, uh, I think late afternoon, early evening, and the deliveries tend to take place in the morning and early afternoon. So we're not aware of any conflicts between loading vehicles and customers and patrons. And there's not an existing loading space shown on a previously approved plan. So there's not one that's shown on the site plan itself. Uh, the loading will take place, uh, predominantly during off-hours as it does right now. Um, for the landscaping and screening, uh, the landscape plan is designed to comply with, um, the requirements of Article 5 of the ordinance for road frontage along Ford, uh, in Marlowe, parking lot landscaping, general site, detention pond and screening, except, um, as follows. Uh, first is, um, let's see, there are four areas of the landscape standards where, uh, the applicant is proposing a modification pursuant to section 5.07 of the ordinance, which by now I think we're all familiar. Some of the circumstances of, of the site are that it's a previously developed site. Um, there's very limited areas in which to put landscaping. And, uh, through the plans that have been submitted by the applicant, um, there's been, um, probably the, um, the maximum attempt possible to get as much landscaping as possible given the constraints of the site and the current site conditions. Um, for frontage landscaping, um, the applicant requests a modification from the frontage landscape requirements along Marlowe Street because the proximity of the existing asphalt makes frontage landscaping impractical. Uh, the areas south of the driveway include the detention pond landscaping and preserve trees. So the non-paved frontage of, of, uh, Marlowe Street will otherwise be landscaped. Um, the Ford Road frontage is proposed to be landscaped according to the ordinance. Uh, the second, uh, modification request is parking lot landscaping. Um, the zoning ordinance requires, uh, 1,500 square feet of interior parking lot landscaping and five trees. Uh, the applicant proposes 633 square feet, uh, with seven trees and 29 shrubs. So the number of trees, uh, will actually exceed the ordinance requirements for parking lot landscaping, but the, um, area of landscaping instead of 1,500 square feet, it'll be 633 square feet. Um, again, because of the constraints of the site, uh, we recommend approval of this modification and, um, the landscape material is proposed to exceed the ordinance standards. Um, the third standard is protective screening. Um, the ordinance requires a six-foot-high masonry wall be located along any side or rear of an off-street parking district, which abuts residentially zoned, uh, district. Um, the site is an existing non-conformity. But the applicant is proposing landscape improvements even though the current parking lot perimeter is not expanding. Uh, the proposed pond straddles the OSP and the residential R5 district. So constructing a wall between the parking lot and the pond is impractical. Uh, there are additional evergreen trees proposed south of the pond and additional arborvitae are proposed east of the pond to supplement the pond plantings and provide additional screening to the south and east. Uh, there's a residential district that's located east of the proposed dumpster enclosure and parking space number 54. Uh, the enclosure of the dumpster would suffice as a wall and we recommend evergreen screening east of parking space number 54. Uh, finally, uh, the applicant requests a modification from the foundation landscaping. Um, the site does not include foundation landscaping, which is an existing non-conformity. Uh, there's no, uh, foundation landscaping proposed based on the location of the existing paving and the frontage landscaping. Uh, so based on those standards, uh, we recommend, uh, that, uh, proposed modifications from the applicable sections for those four items, as illustrated on the plans, be approved, uh, subject to additional evergreen screening east of parking space number 54. Um, there are other sections of the zoning ordinance that require berms in the front yard area, but the site is existing non-conforming, non-conforming regarding the berms. So locating any new berms is impractical based on the location of existing, the existing building and the parking areas. Uh, for the lighting, the site lighting currently has several fixtures that don't comply with the ordinance. Um, the current photometrics are unknown. Um, the applicant is proposing a new lighting plan with conforming fixtures, um, that will comply with section 2.13 of the zoning ordinance. Um, all proposed fixtures are fully shielded on the sides and full cutoff and the illumination on the site, um, meets or exceeds the 0.3-foot candles required by the ordinance. Um, the ordinance limits the height of fixtures to 25 feet or the height of the building, uh, whichever is less. The proposed light poles are 18 feet high, which is, uh, slightly higher than the building height. And the height of a building is measured halfway between the eve and the ridge, uh, to the grade. Uh, we recommend approval of the 18-foot-high poles because they provide adequate light coverage to the site, um, for this predominantly nighttime use, uh, while still staying below the minimum illumination limits, uh, at the lot lines. Uh, for the signage, um, section 6A.063 of the zoning ordinance requires the removal of non-conforming signs when the modification of an existing site requires, uh, submittal and approval of a site plan. Uh, therefore, the existing pole sign must be removed and we recommend a conforming ground sign pursuant to the zoning ordinance as a condition of approval. Uh, the applicant proposes to defer the removal of the pole sign and the construction of a conforming monument sign until the Ford Road Boulevard is constructed, uh, which is planned for construction in 2028 and 2029, um, due to the proximity of the right-of-way to where a prospective sign could be. Uh, we recommend revising the sign, uh, the signage pursuant to Article 6A of the zoning ordinance and showing a conforming monument sign on the plans, with the timing of removal of the pole sign to be mutually agreed upon between the applicant, the Planning Services Division and Township Legal Council through a recorded legal agreement. As a comparable, a few years ago, when, um, Wendy's on the south side of Ford Road near Haggerty, when their site plan was approved, they had a condition of removal of their pole sign and it was in conjunction due to the Ford Road Boulevard project and not knowing where the future right-of-way would be and where the, when the construction would happen. So, um, the township, um, entered into a legal agreement with the property owner that required the removal of the sign within a certain number of years or when the Boulevard is construction, constructed, whatever, uh, whenever, um, happens first. So, uh, we would recommend a similar legal agreement for, uh, the subject property to comply with the ordinance, but also allow for some time built in there, um, for either, um, a date certain or when the Boulevard is constructed, whenever happens first. So, um, we recommend, um, that that be mutually agreed upon between the applicant, the Planning Services Division and Township Legal Council. Um, finally, um, there's a new dumpster enclosure proposed in the southeastern part of the site, um, which is designed to comply with the zoning ordinance. Um, so that will be a dramatic improvement to the site of having a designated enclosure for the dumpster. Um, the site plan includes, um, an oil tank proposed adjacent to the south rear building wall. Uh, because the ordinance requires oil tanks and grease traps to be screened according to the dumpster enclosure standards, um, that oil container would have to be removed either, um, to the enclosure itself or underground. But that's, um, a condition that we recommend for the site plan to be compliant. Um, so in conclusion, staff's recommendation is approval of the site plan, um, including approval of the outdoor dining area to be six feet from the Ford Road right-of-way as proposed on the plans. Um, approval of the 18-foot-high light poles and approval of the noted modifications from Article 5 of the zoning ordinance for the landscaping, uh, subject to the following four conditions. Uh, first, that the owner combine all eight subject parcels. Uh, second, planting additional evergreen screening east of parking space number 54. Uh, third, revising the signage pursuant to Article 6A of the zoning ordinance and showing a conforming monument sign on the plans, with the timing of removal of the pole sign to be mutually agreed upon between the applicant, the Planning Services Division and Township Legal Council through a recorded legal agreement. And fourth, removal, uh, or screening of the oil container to comply with section 2.14 of the zoning ordinance. Uh, that concludes our staff comments and we'll be happy to take any questions.
Thank you, Patrick. Uh, I assume you are the project sponsors? No, Mr. Priest. I mean, it wasn't, wasn't difficult for me to come to that conclusion.
We have had some people just come and just come and state.
Yeah, it's surprising. I know. We're a lot of fun though, aren't we? Do you have anything to add, Mr. Priest?
Uh, no, I mean, I think most of you know me. I'm Evan Priest. I've been working for John on this project and with Patrick, uh, for almost a year now, maybe even a little over a year. Uh, as I'm sure most of you are aware, when you have a non-conforming site like this, there are an awful lot of challenges to get from, uh, where it sits now to, uh, a place where we can try to comply with as many of the things, uh, that the township would like us to comply to, uh, as we can. And we think we've, we've, we've done a lot of that and a lot of, we've worked with Patrick and staff for, you know, a lot of back and forth on this. And it's complicated further by the fact that, uh, the, the county got their hooks into us with the stormwater ordinance as well. So, um, I hope we've, uh, I hope we've gotten to a point where we can, uh, continue to move forward here and we hope you, uh, view this as, uh, as a major improvement to this site. And, uh, I guess that's about all I have to say. John, you want to introduce yourself or anything, uh? Come up here as well. This is John Johnson. He's the owner.
Excuse me. Uh, John Johnson, 43845 Ford Road, Canton. All I wanted to do is put, resurface the parking lot, make it look better. We already had the patio. It just needed some update. Um, you know, we've been there 48 years now. Next, uh, next week. Uh, I've owned it for, me and my wife, for the past 19 years now. And, uh, we think whatever we, uh, end up doing is going to be an improvement to the lot anyways. Uh, but this turned out to be much more than I anticipated or any of us anticipated. But we think, we feel like we've, um, you know, addressed the, uh, the, the zoning issues and the, and the conformity issues. And, uh, we just need to get an approval and move forward.
Okay, great. I'm gonna start down with the, oh, I'm sorry. Did you have something else to add?
I'm sorry.
Did you have something else to add?
No.
Okay, all right. Thank you. Yeah, Commissioner Janowski, do you have any thoughts or questions? Use your mic, sorry.
I think the improvements you're making, Eric, is good. Um, sorry that you had to go down that road.
Yeah.
The surprise is around the corner, but thank you. Looks good.
Commissioner Cruz?
You went to Wayne County and they're making you do detention? Is that what happened?
Yes. That's the short story. If you'd like the longer one, I have one, but.
Well, so that proposed pavement that you're, that's dark right there, is that a half acre or less? Do you know?
Well, the north part there where it's darker is currently gravel because, uh, Mr. Johnson.
Oh, so you're changing the surface.
Unwittingly removed. It was less than a third of an acre, but the county saw a fit to add the recently redone south half of the parking lot to that, which pushed, pushed us over the edge, triggering the, uh, the jurisdiction of their stormwater ordinance.
Yeah, because it's.
The strip in the middle there is just to run a catch basin up there to collect.
For the storm.
Yeah.
The threshold is a half acre.
Correct.
And if you're repaving a half acre or less, no detention.
That's correct. We did a third of an acre a few years back and then we was gonna do another third of an acre this year. And the ordinance does state that, uh, it makes, it closes that loophole, if you will.
Yeah, because two projects equal one project.
You can't, you can't do that that way in order to avoid, uh, the stormwater ordinance, so.
I just bring that up because it's a shame that we have to clear those trees. It's a good buffer and we're having to clear it for detention. And do you have a flooding issue? A flooding issue?
Mr. Johnson doesn't have a flooding issue, but.
Yeah, it's just a shame.
The parking lot is basically one big, uh, impervious thing and it runs basically straight off onto adjacent sites. So while there's no flooding issue on the Rusty Nail parking lot, I can't really speak to what goes on downstream. I don't know, but they, uh, we made an attempt to get them to classify it as the one-third of an acre rather than the, you know, over. rather than the, you know, over a half an acre that we ended up with, but I guess you'd say we lost that battle, so...
Okay, that's all.
Sir, can you go to the mic, because otherwise you won't be recorded, please?
Fortunately, I own the property to be able to put the retention pond in.
Yeah.
If I didn't have that, where would we be then?
Well, you'd be underground, and it'd cost a lot more money.
It would. And if you notice, none of the other small acre sites have detention. For that reason, it falls below the threshold, and they're making you guys do it and clear these trees. It's a shame.
We had a very similar, a couple blocks west of here, maybe eight or nine years ago. There's a building, I think it's occupied by Dog-Ology now, and it used to be when they moved a Mag Formers in there. We did a very similar thing. The owner owned a couple of vacant parcels, and we had to clear them and put in a detention facility.
Oh, that's all I got. Thank you. Commissioner Weber?
I just have a comment. I mean, I've been in your establishment many times. I hope those know. Doesn't speak ill of me.
Totally judging you now.
I am concerned this is nothing you can do about. I am concerned about what happens when they... If and when they ever do the Ford Road project. I mean, again, there's nothing really much we can do about today, but as close as you are to the right-of-way, I just... I hope it doesn't negatively impact you. I mean, obviously, it'll affect all the businesses along Ford Road when they actually do construction, but the end result, I hope, doesn't negatively impact you.
Yeah, I hope not also, but I was assured when we came to the MDOT meeting, the first one that they held here, that it was not going to affect my frontage. And that's why I agreed to go ahead with this project. Now, I should have listened to my wife and not done this project.
Shouldn't you always?
So I'm going to record for that, that I should have just put Band-Aids on it. We wouldn't be here today.
Patrick, you mentioned it, so that we're not privy to the drawings for the MDOT, at least. You say the current drawings don't show that this has any negative impact to this property?
Correct. We've seen different versions, and as time goes by, they become even more finalized. But where we are right now, and not just for this project, but a number of projects that take place on Ford Road, we have applicants work directly with MDOT on those future right-of-way plans. So MDOT's able to specifically state what the proposed construction is, and more important, if there's any additional right-of-way needed for that construction. And in this case, there wasn't any additional right-of-way proposed by MDOT along the stretch in front of Rusty Nail.
Well, where is the right-of-way line in relation to their front of their property?
Yeah, it's that thick line just above. That's the building right there. That line right there is the right-of-way line.
Yeah, so this thick black line is the right-of-way line, a couple feet south of the existing DDA wall.
That would be right around where my sidewalk is then, correct?
There's some space between the right-of-way line and your sidewalk, yeah.
Yeah.
But the DDA wall is mostly in that right-of-way, as you can see, and so...
Well, I don't mean to open up a can of worms here tonight, but I mean, I'm just hopeful that that doesn't... And this is a business that's been there for a long time, and obviously, we want things to do to improve Ford Road and end that corridor, but I don't want to come at the expense of longtime existing businesses either. Anyway, that's it.
Okay. Commissioner Egenberger?
No, but this is such a "you give a mouse a cookie" sort of experience. Started with just wanting... Oh, I'm turning my thing on, sorry. Thing, it's like that book, "If You Give a Mouse a Cookie", there's so much more else that goes on. You just wanted to pave your parking lot. Well, we appreciate you following through on everything. I'm sure it'll turn out to be great.
We'll celebrate there once you're done. Yeah, exactly. Come over, order several rounds. Commissioner Lee?
No comment. I'm good.
Commissioner Watkins?
No questions.
Okay. And I mean, again, I reiterate what everyone else has said. I appreciate there. Obviously, you're investing a lot in this property, and we wish you the best and success. And I have also been there. I haven't been there in a while, but I need to come back, so... Very nice. All right, do we have a motion?
Big one. Anybody want to read it?
Who likes to read a lot of numbers?
I'll do it if I can. Let me get to it.
He happens to... Oh, you got it?
I got it.
You didn't memorize it.
All right. I got it. I don't know if I can do it as dramatically as Commissioner Watkins, but I'll do my best.
No one can.
I move to recommend approval of the site plan amendment for Rusty Nail at 43845 Ford Road. Do I have to read all the parcel numbers, Patrick?
You can just say on the subject parcels.
At the subject parcels listed on the agenda in the model motion, including approval of the outdoor dining area to be six feet from the Ford Road right-of-way as proposed on the plans pursuant to Section 6.10D footnote E of the zoning ordinance, approval of the 18-foot-high light poles, and approval of the noted modifications from Article 5 of the zoning ordinance pursuant to Section 5.07 and subject to the following conditions. One, that the owner combines all eight subject parcels. Two, planting additional evergreen screening east of parking space number 54. Three, revising the signage pursuant to Article 6A of the zoning ordinance and showing a conforming monument sign on the plans, with the timing of the removal of the pole sign to be mutually agreed upon between the applicant, the Planning Services Division, and Township Legal Council through a recorded legal agreement. And four, removing or screening the oil container to comply with Section 2.14 of the zoning ordinance.
All right. We have motion by Commissioner Weber and support by Commissioner Egenberger. Any further discussion? Commissioner Egenberger, could you call the vote, please?
Sure.
Commissioner Cruz?
Yes.
Commissioner Egenberger?
Yes.
Commissioner Janowski?
Yes.
Commissioner Lee?
Yes.
Commissioner Watkins?
Yes.
Commissioner Weber?
Yes.
And Chairperson Zubor? Yes. Motion carries. All right, so next up, I haven't asked that for any other things. Next up, Patrick.
Next up for this will be... The plan has to be approved by the Township Board of Trustees for the modification for the front yard setback for the outdoor dining area. The Planning Commission can recommend the modification, so being a recommending body, the only body that could formally approve it would be the Board of Trustees, so one more step.
Okay, good luck. Yeah, thank you.
Good luck.
All right, and next on our agenda, we have some miscellaneous discussions of the master plan, given that it's 9:00. Are we meeting next Monday, too? Okay. Can we do something short tonight, and then... I don't mean to cut you off again.
Well, how busy does next Monday look?
Well, outside of the master plan stuff, there was some discussion about maybe having some tree ordinance language for you.
That's always a good time.
So with the tree ordinance, I can say the same ordinance that we had dropped a couple weeks ago, there's not going to be anything new, just a cover memo introducing it to the Planning Commission, getting that conversation started, so we can spend as much or as little time as needed on the tree ordinance. I think with the master plan being more pressing, I would recommend having master plan first. Take as much time as we need with the master plan. Whatever's left, the tree ordinance, if it's five minutes, at least we can leave you with that, so open-ended there.
Okay. So I will go as fast as we can, but the discussion points and how long you want to discuss is kind of on you as well. If you just tell me that everything's great and you want to just go with it, then we can do that, too.
I thought we were discussing possibly just doing master plan Monday.
Do you want to do it all Monday? Because you're going to have this and other things that I'm going to be giving you on Monday.
We will give you our undivided attention.
We can go through this quickly, and then any notes that you have? I mean, this is... We have a couple of small little things, and housing is really the big one, and the future land use are the big ones on this.
Yeah, I don't personally, I don't want to blow through the master plan stuff. I mean, that sounds like a personal problem, but...
Well, you have the presentation in front of you, so, I mean, we can take a consensus on what you want to do.
We will come armed with our questions and comments on top of whatever you have to present to us.
I've sent you all the links and all of the documents that were on discussion for tonight, so really, it was the existing land use, the SWAT analysis, which the SWAT analysis is from all the public engagement stuff. So you've heard that all already. It's just written in a final form. Existing land use, there won't be anything surprising in there. It's just, again, putting what you see in the community on paper and kind of giving it some historical context of where it's been moving forward. The housing in the neighborhoods has to do with a lot of... You've already seen the goals and objectives, so this is a lot of the analysis and some of the findings that we have, but it does address the accessory dwelling units and the microhousing and things that we've discussed here before and weren't quite sure how we wanted to go for it. And then the future land use, which you've seen a number of times before, but it's just more formalized in the draft text form. So I can go through all of these things. You have the presentation. It's kind of up to you on how you want to move forward tonight.
Can I make a suggestion going forward? And maybe this isn't fair, but on nights when we have agendas like this, we got to break up the master plan stuff somehow. And I'm perfectly happy to talk all master plan next week, but we had four significant projects on here tonight, and I know you guys got a lot to do and put a lot of time to this. And I don't want to shortchange you, Aaron. So I personally, to give it the attention it deserves, I would personally rather put it off until all next week.
All next week, okay.
And we will.
Is that how everybody's feeling?
And I guess I would ask my fellow commissioners that everyone take a thorough look at the stuff that Aaron's given us already so that we can come armed with whatever comments and questions we have before that meeting. Make sure you don't do it when you have a short attention span.
I'll bring the box.
There will be more text that you will be receiving throughout this week, so you'll have... There's going to be more next week, not just these four chapters, but there's going to be more, and chances are, they're going to be longer, the substantive chapters, the transportation, the corridors, things like that. Now, you've already seen the goals and objectives before, so you kind of know where we're going with this, but this is the formalized text. Not the final text, because it's not quite pretty yet, but it is the more formalized text.
Well, Aaron, how long were you thinking it was going to take tonight?
I thought we'd be here till 11:00. I don't know. I don't know. I didn't know how long those four cases were going to take.
No, how long do you think your presentation is right now for tonight that you had planned?
It could be anywhere from 30 to 45 minutes. But it just depends on the conversation.
Plus what we do next week, that feels like we could have another two-hour meeting rather than a three-hour meeting tonight.
I'm here to serve the board, so however you guys want to... That came out a little strange, but if you guys want to discuss tonight, we're ready to discuss tonight. If you want to deliberate and wait till next week, that's fine. You're just going to have extra stuff for next week to go over, more than just these four chapters.
I just want to make sure we give it the proper attention it deserves.
I agree. I agree, and right now, I am exhausted, and I imagine that there are several other people who feel that way up here, so...
I will let you know I will not be here next Monday, okay?
So if you have any feedback, you can pass it on.
Yes, but I'm gone.
And as you're working through these chapters one at a time, or however piecemeal, however you want to do them, if you want to send me an email with your comments, your thoughts, your questions, so that way we have some things already built in or I can address those questions in the presentation, that'll make things go a little faster next week as well. So that's always an option for you.
That's a good idea. I actually had a little tiny...
You can call the office anytime if you want to discuss something more in-depth, too.
I had some minor feedback.
Aaron, we appreciate your work.
Yes.
Can I ask?
Please don't.
Well, I just don't want to not be awake for it.
Can I ask a question about some of these upcoming applications that I see? Where the Showstagg Brothers one that's at Canton Corners, that's for a new restaurant?
That one is unique, given you a lot of unique ones lately. That's the small building that has the Buddy's Pizza and the Luca Pastry. Those are...
Where the insurance agency used to be?
Yeah. And those are carryout restaurants, and there was a proposed restaurant for a zoning compliance that came in for more of a standard sit-down restaurant. And there's a conditional rezoning on that site. Many years ago, it was approved with a condition that there not be a restaurant. Through the years, carryout restaurants have been approved, but standard restaurants have not. There were some reasons why that was put in, but when we come before the Planning Commission, I think next month, our recommendation will likely be to approve it from the current zone with the conditions to either removing those conditions or modifying the conditions to allow for a sit-down restaurant, because some of the concerns that were brought up many, many years ago, they haven't really come to fruition, and some of the protective measures have been implemented. So it would be occupying existing building, nothing new constructed.
I'm glad to see that. Yes, I'm glad to see it getting used. I'm sick of seeing that. They went downhill in recent years.
Just a quick question. Since we're having the big workshop next week, is there any objections to maybe moving it up earlier, maybe 6:00, so that way we won't be here quite as long? I know people have schedules. That's why I'm asking ahead of time.
Yeah.
Not possible?
Yeah, it's challenging.
That's always tough for you, Brian.
Are you able to make it as fixed?
We don't have any planning.
This is for the workshop. So 6:00 next week.
Can you do it?
Yeah, next week.
Okay.
Okay, excellent.
Let's do that.
Okay.
That sounds good.
Do you have any problem noticing that?
Yes, they do.
With the notice, we would just be posting an agenda, I think, a few days before, so when we post the agenda at the end of the week, we would just change it to 6:00 instead of 7:00.
Sorry, Aaron.
Yeah, I feel bad. We always cut you short, but it will give us...
Ah, there you go.
You want to stay?
You're the one who came in here and said you were exhausted.
Motion to adjourn, ma'am, sure.
Did I hear motion to adjourn?
Motion to adjourn.
All right, we have a motion to adjourn by Commissioner Weber and support by Commissioner Egenberger. Any further discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
It's going to make you call the vote, but...